Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the May...
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, May 23rd, 2018, meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown. We are going to start it with the Pledge of Allegiance, and you're all invited to join it.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the common law which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're operating without microphones tonight, so we're gonna try to do our best to let everybody hear us. It's not that big of a room, so there shouldn't be any problem. If there is a problem, please let us know, and the agenda's gonna be read from the microphone now.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. The Planning Department would like to recommend the following items be recessed because the applicants are not ready to be heard at this time. Under zoning petitions, number 1, 2012-04 Storey Book Homes, Nissconset. Number 2, 2012-02 Carlson Associates, Kings Park. Number 3, 2010-06 KBC Holdings. Under waiver requests, 4, number 773 Scholar States, Comac. Number 5, 911A Glen Hill Northern at St. James. Under 288A application, 6, Lizetta Street. And under final subdivision, number 7, 1136 Map of Oak Meadow.
Is there anybody present on any of the matters just read regarding which the Planning Department is recommending an adjournment, a recess? Seeing none, motion, please.
I move that recessed items 1 through 7 as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So recessed.
The first item on the agenda under new hearings and decisions is an extension of conditional final plat approval for Country Point Woods at Smithtown. The applicant requests a six-month extension of the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as number 1167 Map of Country Point Woods at Smithtown. The final subdivision of number 1167 Map of Country Point Woods at Smithtown received conditional final approval from the Planning Board on June 14th, 2017. This approval is valid for a period of 180 days that expired on December 11th, 2017. Subsequently, the applicant received a six-month extension that expires on June 11th, 2018. The request for an additional six months was submitted on May 7th, 2018. The Planning Department has reviewed the request and has no objection. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration: Planning Board Resolution Number 2018, Extension of Conditional Final Approval for Number 1167 Map of Country Point Woods at Smithtown. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Vincent J. Pizzuli Jr. for an extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision number 1167 Map of Country Point Woods at Smithtown. Now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the request to extend the conditional final approval for number 1167 Map of Country Point Woods at Smithtown for a period of six months to expire on December 11th, 2018.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Vincent Pizzuli with offices at 200 Robbins Lane in Jericho. I thank the Planning Department for its report and recommendation. We are almost there. The final mylos and prints are being circulated for signature. Started two weeks ago. Next stop is the Smithtown Assessors Office, and then we will be... get the Health Department's signature, and then bring it to the Chairman for his signature. I anticipate that all of this is going to occur within two to three months, but I've been wrong before. So we're donating another $250 to the Town of Smithtown and requesting a six-month extension of time.
And you've heard the recommendation and proposed resolution, and you're in agreement with both?
Yes, we are, sir.
Any member of the public wish to be heard on this particular matter? Any questions from any member of the Board on this particular matter? Seeing none, a motion, please.
In the matter of number 1167 Map of Country Point Woods at Smithtown, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Hearing is closed. We thank you. Not done yet.
In the matter of number 1167 Map of Country Point Woods at Smithtown, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Resolution is adopted. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you.
The next item is an extension of performance bond for number 1039 Garden Gate at St. James. The applicant did not pick up signs, so the item cannot be heard.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We'd just like to bring to the Board's attention that this item has been on the Board's agenda for five meetings. This is the sixth meeting that they have not picked up signs or posted the property for. So we would recommend that the Board consider either dismissing or denying this without prejudice.
And have you reached out to the applicant?
Yes, we've sent letters to the applicant for each meeting and phoned the applicant to ask.
And no response?
Correct.
Okay, so then I think that would be appropriate, given the lack of response and follow-up. And then I hear again that we would have a motion to deny the application without prejudice to renew should they choose to do so. So a motion for that?
In the matter of number 1039 Map of Garden Gate at St. James?
Close the hearing, please.
Oh, okay. That's the applicant's hearing, right? In the matter of number 1039 Map of Garden Gate at St. James, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Hearing is closed.
And in the matter of number 1039 Map of Garden Gate at St. James, I move that we deny the application without prejudice, and if they choose, they can come forward.
Resubmit it.
Resubmit the application in the future.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Application is denied without prejudice to renew should they choose to do so.
The next item is another extension of performance bond period, number 889B Jason Estates. The applicant requests an extension of the performance period of the performance bond for the subdivision known as number 889B Map of Jason Estates. The subdivision known as number 889B Map of Jason Estates received conditional final approval from the Planning Board on December 5th, 2012. The Planning Board Chairman signed the performance bond estimate at the February 6th, 2013, meeting. Subsequently, the Town Board accepted the performance bond on February 4th, 2014. Prior to this request, the applicant received a two-year extension that expired on February 4th, 2018. The applicant is requesting another two-year extension in order to have more time to complete the public improvements. The engineering, highway, and traffic safety departments have no objection to the request. The Planning Department has no objection to the request. Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration: Planning Board Resolution Number 2018, Extension of Performance Period of the Performance Bond for Number 899B Map of Jason Estates. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Anthony Viola to retroactively extend the performance period of the performance bond for number 899B Map of Jason Estates, now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the request of Anthony Viola to retroactively extend the performance period of the performance bond for number 889B Map of Jason Estates for a two-year period to expire on February 4th, 2020.
Anybody present on behalf of the applicant? Sir, just give your name and... hold to the microphone. Give your name and address and your relationship to the applicant for the record, unless you are all the applicant, and then you can tell us that.
I'm the applicant. Good evening. My name is Anthony Viola.
Your address, please, for the record.
32 Dorothy Street, Port Jefferson Station, New York.
Is that the affidavit of posting in your hand, sir?
Yes.
Can you please hand it up to Mr. Colado?
Right.
Turn over here. Thank you. Have you... Sir, have you heard the review, the recommendation, and the proposed resolution put forth by the Planning Department?
Yes.
You're in agreement?
Yes.
Anybody present wish to be heard on this particular matter? Any questions from any member of the Board on this particular matter?
good catch again by Allison. The affidavit is predated as opposed to being signed on the day of the meeting, so it's off by four days.
Correct. So you're saying it's dated May 19th. How could someone swear that was posted five days before tonight, signing it not... five days... signing it before, five days before tonight?
Again, it's a good catch by Allison.
So, sir...
There's an overview.
Sir, there's an issue with your affidavit of posting. The affidavit has to state that the posting was there for five consecutive days before tonight's meeting. Allison, one of our planners, picked up astutely that it is dated May 19th, which you could not have sworn on May 19th that something was posted five days before May 23rd.
Right.
So I believe that can be rectified if there's somebody who's a notary present who could take the signature. I'm a notary, but I don't think I can do it as being a member of the Board. Somebody independent has to do it. If there's nobody who's a notary present, you're going to have to redo it.
Aye.
Do you know what? You want to recall this at the end?
Yes.
What we're gonna do, sir... our psychographer's a notary. So what you're gonna do, you're gonna re-swear it today, and then we'll recall it again after the affidavit of posting is corrected, and then we'll just vote on it, all right?
Right.
As opposed to you having to do the whole thing all over again.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
But we're gonna have to take you at the end, because he's gonna... he has other things to do until then.
Sure.
So just sit tight, and we'll get to you after we're done with everything else.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Good job. Thanks.
The next item is a telecommunications application, TC 2018-02. This was recessed from last meeting. The application was first heard at the May 9th, 2018 Planning Board meeting. At that meeting, the Planning Department read into the record a report outlining the application. In addition to the Planning Department's report, the applicant provided the Board with additional information and called up various experts to speak on behalf of the application. At the conclusion of the testimony and at the request of the member of the public, the Board recessed the hearing to May 23rd, 2018 Planning Board meeting in order to allow the public the opportunity to review the application. In the time between May 10th, 2018, and today, one resident reviewed the file in the Planning Department. No comments were submitted. In addition, the Department of Environment and Waterways completed the SEACRA review and recommends the Board issue a SEACRA negative declaration. The Department of Environment and Waterways offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration: Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2018, Recommended SEACRA Declaration for a Special Exception Petition TC 2018-02. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the SEACRA recommendation from the Department of Environment and Waterways for number TC 2018-02, New York SNSA Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless, now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown hereby issue a SEACRA negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance, and EIS is not necessary. In the matter of Special Exception Petition 2018-02, Verizon at 1056 West Jericho Turnpike, Tier 2, by New York SNSA Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless, for the following reasons: A, the proposal does not appear to significantly threaten any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified and are regulated by the Environmental Conservation Law of the State of New York or Smithtown Town Code. B, the proposal does not involve the physical modification of or construction upon lands which suffer from any severe environmental constraints, no high groundwater, no poor soil properties, and no unmanageable slopes. C, the proposal appears to be compatible with neighboring land uses, placement of antennas inside screen enclosures concealing the antennas from view and thereby minimizing visual impacts. And D, the proposal appears to be consistent with the location, site, design, and safety requirements of Chapter 242 of the Smithtown Town Code. Planning Department recommends approval and offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration: Planning Board Resolution Number 2018, Tier 2 Personal Wireless Service Facility Approval Special Exception Petition TC 2018-02. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the Special Exception Application of New York SNSA Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless for Personal Wireless Service Facility, now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the Special Exception Application TC 2018-02, New York SNSA Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless, for Personal Wireless Service Facility pursuant to Chapters 242 and 322-30.3 of the Smithtown Town Code, subject to the following conditions: One appropriate signage shall be installed on all access points to the roof that provides the following information: A, notification a telecommunications facility which produces radio frequency emissions is present on the roof; B, identification of the radio frequency emission range; and C, provision of contact information to arrange for shut-off of the facility in the event that it is necessary for any person or people to be on the roof.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Board. I'd like to make my appearance to the record. Simone M. Freeman of Amato Law Group, PLLC 666 Old Country Road, Suite 901, Garden City, New York, 11530. I am appearing tonight on behalf of the applicant, New York SNSA Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless, in connection with the application before you. Just to reiterate, Verizon Wireless is respectfully requesting Tier 2 Special Exception Approval pursuant to Section 322-30.3, Subsection B of the Town of Smithtown Code. And as indicated in the Planning Department memos dated May 4th, 2018, and also today, May 23rd, 2018, the proposed design for the small cell facility complies with the location, sighting, design, and safety standards set forth in the wireless ordinance, and the Planning Department has recommended approval of the application. Therefore, we respectfully submit that all the requirements necessary for the issuance of the Tier 2 Special Exception Permit have been met by Verizon Wireless. And the grant of the Tier 2 Special Exception Permit will be consistent with the town's wireless ordinance, New York State law, town law, and the Telecommunications Act of 1996. As such, we respectfully request that the Planning Board close the hearing, adopt the negative declaration under SEACRA, and grant the Tier 2 Special Exception Permit application as recommended by the Planning Department in its memos.
Thank you. Anybody present wish to be heard on this particular matter? Ma'am, please. Anybody else just come up to the microphone, state your name and your address, and then you can speak.
I'm Barbara Morris. I live at 1 Bayberry Lane in Smithtown. I'm within 200 feet of the proposed small cell facility. And Verizon Wireless's RF report from March 8th, 2018, Section 2.2 entitled "System Evaluation", it states, "All propagation modeling performed for the proposed communications facility utilized high-resolution 30-meter elevation when measuring the radiation that will be transmitted or radio waves." However, the homes located within the 200-foot range and the 1,000-foot range are at an altitude of 40 to 44 meters. Does Verizon Wireless have those measurements? And if not, when will those tests be rerun to give a more accurate measurement of the radio waves or electromagnetic radiation traveling through our environment at an elevation of 44 meters before this committee can consider approving this proposal? Should I make my other points before I...
Yes, you should make all eight points, and if the applicant wishes to address them, or have... if they have any experts here who might be able to address them, we give them that opportunity. But it's probably best if you go through all of your points at once.
Okay. Thank you. The street level analysis also shows a maximum RF level of 9.1342 percent, and again, that's at a 30-meter elevation. However, the rooftop analysis shows the calculated RF levels potentially exceed the FCC MPE limit. And once the site is erected, Verizon Wireless can go back and increase that 9.1342 RF level ad nauseam, provided it doesn't exceed federal standards. That is, without getting a permit and reapplying for any kind of approval through here. What then will happen to those rooftop levels, and who will measure those? Pertaining to Verizon Wireless's proposal, Section 4.0 site need, they state there is a serious deficiency in Verizon Wireless's wireless coverage in the Smithtown objective. And this is the point that I feel like I am maybe qualified, because all this is... I'm just flying by the seat of my pants and looking for halls, but I am an English teacher, and a serious deficiency... I want to focus on the word "serious." They cite dropped calls as evidence, and does that constitute a serious deficiency? Aren't they using the term "serious" a bit loosely? Loss of connection is annoying, certainly, and convenient, yes, but serious? I don't know. I don't think so. Also, when Verizon Wireless canvassed our area, they asked people about their cellphone coverage but did not disclose their agenda. Asking people if they feel they have too many dropped calls is a lot different than prefacing that same question with, "We are proposing to build a small cell facility within 1,000 feet from your home. Do you feel you have too many dropped calls?" Telling people what the personal cost will be to them would reap very different responses. Their agenda was deliberately concealed, and didn't Verizon Wireless unethically gather their data by hiding their agenda. I went around one afternoon and got all of these signatures, not even a whole afternoon. I had two hours to get this done, because I have a job. This is their job. And they... these neighbors do not agree... there's over 100 signatures here that I got in two hours, that there is a serious service deficiency that warrants placing a small cell facility within... 137 homes are going to be adjoined to it within a 1,000-foot radius. And that was only a small percentage of the homes that I went to. I didn't... I wasn't able to go to all 137 homes in two hours. Why is there a list of 130 names of people whose property is adjoined to the proposed site within 1,000 feet inside the file? Why does that need to be in your file if you're not notifying those people of the proposed radiation transmitter facility? Is it to do future cluster studies of people whose health will be affected by the radiation, much the same way cluster studies show high rates of birth defects near high-tension wires despite the government setting original legislation to protect corporations rather than people? And why was our area circled like a target in the file with the names listed here if these people weren't notified? Also, the original sign on Castro's property only said subdivision or related matter. Then the sign was taken away. No sign was placed there notifying the public of tonight's meeting. Also, one of the neighbors within 200 feet of the proposed radiation transmitter facility was never notified by certified mail. So adequate notice of this planning commission meeting was not given, which isn't that a violation of New York State's Open Meetings Act, especially since the guidelines state that the purpose of the planning commission is to provide objective decisions in the community's best interest. The decision is based on the staff report, the site visit, other relevant information, and public comments, but how can the public comment if they're not informed of the issue? Thank you very much. Those are my points.
Anybody else wish to be heard in the public? Just call up one at a time. Give your name and address, and then you can be heard.
Good evening. My name is Timothy Smith. I also live at 1 Bayberry Lane.
I'm concerned with the fact that the Town of Smithtown does not want this revenue in their pocket. And why hasn't there been with all the land in Smithtown that is certainly within our area also, that's not surrounded by homes with children and working people that want to enjoy their yard without feeling that there's something serious going on that they can't even see, smell, taste, or hear? So I would like to think that there's some way I might be able to help the town find a location, because I know Verizon, they shouldn't be denied if they need service here. They shouldn't really be denied it, but on the same note, we should not have to live with that in our backyard. So if there's anything I can do to help find a new location, I'd be more than willing to offer my time, which is very limited, since I work an awful lot of hours. But I would be willing to help if that's what it takes, anything not to have it in my backyard. And I would also like to ask for a delay, so we could actually, if this is gonna continue to go on, we would like more time to obtain attorneys and maybe a professional legal team like, you know, like Verizon has assembled. They have seven or eight different professionals here to counterpoint anything that we happen to say, which is, you know, kudos to them, but again, being a working individual, I can't... I don't have all that much time to do that. So I did go around, and the people I did talk to were not very happy about having their name on a list that they didn't get notified for. I think that's rather shameful. If you're gonna make a list of people and target them, I think they should all be notified, and they should all be here at the list boardroom to speak their minds. Not just five families within 200 feet, but, you know, everybody that was on that list should be notified. And could you give us six months to prepare our own more data and, you know, and our legalese team? Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Marmer. I live at 12 Laurel Lane in Comac, right off of Wyandotte, where this proposed cellphone tower will be going. I don't have a prepared speech, but I do really want to piggyback. You know, I bought my house in 2011, a first-time home buyer, and the running joke between all our friends and family when they come visit is that there's never any cellphone service. I will slow down. I apologize. I'm... my heart is racing, and not because I'm nervous, but because I have a daughter, and I am pregnant with my second. And I have done limited research, as I was only made aware of this within the past week. I've done the research, and it does cause birth defects. And when I bought my home, and the joke was that there was no cellphone service, I was okay with that, because I knew that meant there was no cellphone tower nearby. So piggybacking off of what these people both just said, I think we need more time to do some research on the ramifications of putting this cellphone tower on, because how would any of you feel tonight if something happened to my unborn child or my daughter, who's only two and a half? So I really want to piggyback and request an extension so that we can all, as a team here, do some research and see what this cellphone tower will do, because again, I live one street off of this proposed site, and I'm very, very scared for my family when I found out about this, again, only a week ago. So...
Thank you. I just want to clarify one thing, though. You keep referring to it as a tower, and I don't believe the plans show that it's gonna be a tower. They... the applicant may wish to address that after everybody in the public is done speaking, but I believe the application that was presented two weeks ago called for a panel perhaps four, five, or six feet above the height of the roof.
Right.
Of the building. So it's not a tower, just so you know.
I understand, but regardless, what it is, is it's emitting radiation that can cause birth defects to both my child and my unborn, and I'm not comfortable with that in my backyard. Again, there are many other places this can go, so please consider giving us some more time to do some research.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Robert Tryka. I live at 27 Bayberry Lane. I'm also a Verizon... tryka. I also am a Verizon customer, and I haven't been notified, nor I don't believe any neighbors that I'm aware of have been notified also of the intent of Verizon putting a cell tower... a cell facility here. And I don't believe... my wife and I haven't been notified. I believe many of my neighbors have not been notified. So it was just... I just found this out this previous weekend. So it was just, I just found this out this previous weekend. Thanks to our neighbors at 1 Bayberry Lane.
I believe it was posted before the May 9 hearing. Otherwise, we wouldn't have had the hearing, but it's okay.
No one came knocking on my door or called my phone or sent me any letters, that's for sure. So I request the same, that this should be postponed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to be heard?
My name is Patricia Colucciello, C-O-L-U-C-C-I-E-L-L-O. And I give a blessing when I say it. I've lived in Smithtown for 56 years, 26 Bayberry Lane. And anytime things have gone on in our area that we have to be notified, we get a letter. If my neighbor hadn't come to my door and told me that this was going on, I have no way of knowing. I just want to know why we were not notified. That's all. Just why we were not notified so that we could have said something or done something before tonight.
And who are you addressing that question to? The applicant?
The applicant. That's it. That's all I wanted to say. 56 years and every time anything is done, I've gotten letters.
Anybody else wish to be heard? All right, so before we have any, sir?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm Joe Catrone.
My mother Lydia Catrone is at 5 Laurel Drive.
And your address, sir?
Is 8 Magenta Lane, East Northport. I think one of the things we've heard tonight is that there's been a lack of time for our neighbors to prepare for this. I'd like to know, maybe Barbara, you saw the date, or maybe you can tell what date you started preparation for this application? And I know six months has been requested, but we would like the similar amount of time that they've had to prepare for this. And obviously, there's got to be a reason that there is such an incredible team here that they've brought in, brought in twice with reams that are at least five inches. We're novices.
I'm saying it's not just this application is any different from any of the other ones that we've had from this applicant or others.
Okay, so that's.
There's a lot of technical information that they have to be prepared to present if necessary.
All right, so I appreciate that on the technical side.
We don't know. And we're taking their word. And it seems to be an issue, a smaller issue, but every home that is in the first questioning of these certified letters that may or may not have gone out are higher than the antennas. And I know it was referenced as a tower, but the antennas. And the antennas are gauged, from what I heard last week, for a radiation drop down towards the ground. But my mother's pool is probably just a little bit beyond that window if you were to throw a rock. So when my daughter, who's 14, sits at that pool, is she going to be irradiated? You also had something passed as a recommendation about culture that doesn't have any cultural effects. I really don't understand all the language behind that. But sitting in your backyard with a pool and a barbecue is culture. And if I have to say I'm not going to bring my daughter over to the house anymore because I'm afraid that 30 years from now she'll have cancer or her ovaries will be messed up? Think about that. Is this really worth it for us? This serious? I'm glad, Barbara, you caught that. Are 911 calls being missed in Suffolk County? Is that serious? That's serious. Are there 911 issues? So is it hard? I've never, by the way, I have Verizon. I've never lost a call over there. Is it hard, though, for anybody that tries to get into 911 to get 911? That's serious. Having a little data issue, having a little phone call issue, that's not serious. That's an inconvenience. Cancer in my daughter, that's serious. So whatever the date is, can you give us at least the amount of time that they have had to prepare? I think that would be wonderful. Not to say that you're wrong, but we don't know if you're right. I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks so much.
Anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? All right. Before we give the applicant an opportunity to respond to any of those comments, or all of them, should they choose to, some questions were raised about notice. And I'm just going to ask our planning staff, I'm going to presume that the matter would not have been calendared on May 9th had the town's requirements for giving notification of the hearing not been complied with.
That's correct. There was a, the applicant has submitted the affidavit of posting as well as the affidavit mailing, and they've provided us with the, with the receipts from the certified mailings. So they were required to notify all property owners within 200 feet of the property.
And according to the documentation that you have, they did that?
That's correct.
Okay, and it was posted, we know that was posted for May 9th, which was the first time this was on two weeks ago? And one of the people who spoke tonight, I believe, came then and asked for an adjournment to go and look at the records in the planning department and perhaps prepare for any further presentation, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So as far as.
You just got to go back to the mic if you want.
As far as the planning department is concerned, the notification requirements set forth in the town code have been complied with.
That's correct.
I'm sorry.
Restating name, please.
1 Bayberry Lane.
Barbara Morris.
Barbara Morris, 1 Bayberry Lane.
All the sign said was subdivision or related matter. So, and, and other than the handful of people that got the certified mail, which, can you tell me if there was, well, I don't know if you could tell me, but Deborah Monaco's name was in bold as being within 200 feet, and she said she did not receive a certified mail. And it's in bold as being within 200 feet.
What's that address?
6 Laurel Lane, 6 Laurel Drive, sorry.
Okay, yeah. So she's checking. I don't, I'm not saying yes or no whether that particular residence is within the 200-foot requirement. I don't know. But I'm, I'm presuming that the planning department has that data as to all the required, all the residences who were required to be notified who were within that radius.
Okay.
And.
But even, even the notification, I'm sorry.
The person may not have been notified, but I'm saying they may not have been, they may not have been required to be notified.
All right, well, according to the file, the information in the file, all the names of the people that were within 200 feet were in bold. And her name is in bold and she did not receive, all right? There's like five names that are in bold and including, and, and the people that I spoke with whose names were in bold said, yes, they did receive that certified mail, but she did not. Also, as I said, the sign that was posted on the Castro Medical Building just said subdivision or related matter.
I have to say by law, and it's up to anybody who's interested to go look at the number and go, if they'd like, come to the meeting or go look at the planning department's files.
Well, that's, that's, you know.
The law sets forth what has to be put on those signs. I'm sure the applicant complied with it, otherwise he wouldn't have been here last two weeks ago.
Okay. Well, when I walked into the, the, you know, the, the planning department and I said, "Can you give me more information on the subdivision matter?", they said, "Oh, you mean the cell tower." So that came from the planning board.
You know who? Name of the person that said that?
I'd rather not say.
Is there any comment on that particular one resident that is supposedly within, or possibly within the 200-foot requirement and didn't get notification?
I've looked at the cards and, and that address is not in the cards, but I haven't gotten to the affidavit of.
Okay.
Of mailing yet, so.
Do we, do we know whether that address is within the 200-foot requirement?
No, I don't think so, yes.
So you're checking that? You'd be able to check that tonight?
Yes.
While we go on?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Does the applicant wish to respond to any of those comments?
Yes.
Now's the time to do so while Ms. Murray is looking to see if we can confirm about that one particular resident.
Back to the notice. Now, we'd like to submit the town's list that was provided to us.
By the town planning department for notices, which covers every property owner within a 200-foot radius, which is the.
Of course, in your application, the planning department gave you.
Yes.
A list of the people who their records indicated were within the 200 feet.
Yes, the.
And that's the list that's in your hand?
Yes.
And that's the list of the people who you mailed it to?
Yes.
Basically, the people that the planning department said had to get notice?
Exactly.
Okay, you want to hand that out?
Yes, we would. And to note, 12 Laurel Road, 27 Bayberry Lane, 26 Bayberry Lane, and I believe it was 6 Laurel Road with.
Monaco was the name?
Monaco are not on this list.
Yeah, Laurel Road's not actually, it's a street.
Laurel Drive. Excuse me. You're welcome. Can we keep this?
I'm sorry.
You need a copy of this, Ben? We do need a copy, but you can, I mean, if you can email that back to us tomorrow, you know, another copy tomorrow, that would be great. But for now, we just, we want to submit it as a record so that you have it. Sure.
Give them back, make a scan and email it back to them.
Sure.
If that's okay?
Sure.
So basically, a comment was made about an address of a person named Monaco. 6 Laurel Drive.
Yes.
And according to the list that was given to you by our planning department, that address was not one of the addresses that was required to be notified by mail. Is that correct?
Yes, it is not. Yes, correct.
Okay, go forward.
Now, I just want to call first Dave Collins, who is our RF emissions expert, to address the comments relating to the RF emissions at the property.
Mr. Collins, please give your full name, your business address, and also state your qualifications for the record. Dave Collins.
Business address, 14 Ridgedale Avenue, Cedar Knolls, New Jersey. My qualifications, I have a Bachelor of Science degree from City College of New York in industrial technology. I have 18 years' experience as an assessor of radio frequency levels vis-à-vis the FCC rules and regulations, and I have done so in excess of 7,000 times. 7,000 antenna sites I've assessed, including this one this evening.
Are you very, are you familiar with those FCC rules and regulations?
Yes, I am. I have, I've, I've testified all over Nassau and Suffolk County, New York City.
And you might be the one, the proper one to answer it? And if you're not, I believe it's come out of some of these campaigns in the past and sometimes residents are concerned about the radio frequency emissions. Under federal law, isn't it the way that federal law deals with these particular facilities that if it's shown that the facility is under the federal limit, the local municipality doesn't really have the authority to deny it based on that particular ground?
That is correct, yes. Federal law supersedes all municipal and state laws in this regard. As a little background, the FCC has set a standard for maximum permissible exposure levels because of a known variant of our susceptibility to radio frequency. The consensus of opinion established a particular level as saying above this level would be a health effect. And the FCC, being conservative in nature, made their maximum permissible level 50 times lower than the health effect level. So there is a large cushion of safety involved. They also provide a mathematical formula for determining the level, and then you would compare that to the maximum levels permitted and, and determine whether you're compliant or require mitigation. All right, we were provided by Verizon Wireless the operating parameters for this antenna site and used those operating parameters in the formula and determined that the maximum calculated level, which in, by the way, as a brief aside, the, the formula itself is skewed conservative as well so that the numbers achieved from the calculations are intentionally high, so to speak, higher than generally when you do measurements of a site that's existing and you've done prior calculations. The calculations are always, I will go as far as to say, always higher than the measured levels. Okay, having said all that, the maximum calculated level at this site, in terms of a percentage of what's permitted, with 100% being the maximum permitted level, in this case, the calculated level was 9.1342%. That is more than 10 times below the limit. And considering the limit itself has a factor of 50 safety built into it, we are very, in addition to be legally under the limit, we are under the health effect limit by a very large margin.
Who measured that and when was it measured?
Oh, not measured, calculated.
When was it calculated?
My company, Pinnacle Telecom Group of 14 Ridgedale Avenue, Cedar Cedar Knolls, New Jersey, we performed the calculations based on the operating parameters given to us by Verizon for this site.
Being based on this particular equipment?
Yes.
Okay. So what you're saying is that the emissions as measured or calculated by you for this facility would be 9% of the federal minimum?
Maximum.
Maximum, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
We are compliance by a very large margin.
In other words, you can, you can multiply it by 10 and it would still be under the federal limit?
That is correct.
Anything else you want to add?
That's it. Other than the fact that the built-in conservatism of both the standard itself and the mathematics involved in obtaining the calculations, in real world, the limits will, the levels measured will be, measured versus calculated, will be even lower than this 9% figure.
The board, did it ask you to have any questions?
Quick question. I've heard this referred to as a cell tower, which I understand that it is not. Can you briefly just describe to me in layman's terms what the difference is as far as emissions go as far as the height difference between the two?
Height becomes a factor, that is one of the factors that's in the, in the mathematical formula. As with any energy source, the further away you get from it, rather horizontally or vertically, the weaker the emanating power signal. Simple, light a match and hold it an inch or two in your hand, you feel the heat, you start to pull your hand away, you feel less and less. This is no different. It's a source of energy and distance is the mitigating factor. The further away you get, the lower and lower the number gets.
The source of energy you say from a cellphone tower would be significantly higher than this?
Oh, no, no.
It's not.
It's almost an apple and orange. They're both using the same technology, but rooftops in this particular area, they're not 10, 12-story buildings, they're not the height of a cell tower. Cell towers are generally put in more rural areas when there isn't anything else to mount antennas on so that you can get a signal out to the population so they can utilize the phone. This building is shorter, I think. I'll be with you in a minute.
The mounting height of these antennas is 28 feet and change.
That's the top or the bottom?
That is to what we call the center line. This was the, the length of my arm was the antenna?
The, from a propagation standpoint for the signal, it was measured from the center. So these actually would be maybe 26 feet above the ground. So they're a little closer, but still, they're closer than they would be where you'd mount them on a monopole or a three-legged tower or the like. But nonetheless, we are still.
So the signal strength would be the same as the monopole tower or not?
I, I'm sorry, could you state that again, please?
The signal strength of the antenna being placed on the Castro building, would that be the same signal strength as one of the tall cell towers we see?
Well, I can't really compute that other than to say there's a slightly greater distance because it'd be mounted on a tower further up, so the distance down to the ground's a little more. But, I mean, obviously, number one, sufficient for telephone service, and number two, it still complies with the rules and regulations governing exposure.
I understand complying with the rules and regulations, but just to answer my question, if I were to be 10 or 50 feet away from one versus 50 feet away from the other, would I still be affected the same?
What kind of?
Would I see the same signal?
Oh, in terms of speaking? I would just say sufficient. There would, there would be as, less because now you've got a greater distance. And we, we have a, where is he? We have a radio engineer that can be actually more precise than I.
I don't, I don't want to get too technical here, but.
No, I think what you're asking is because the homes are so much higher, given the steep and.
I think what you're asking is because the homes are so much higher, given the steep elevation, you're saying, in other words, the signal, would the signal be stronger or weaker?
Would that have a greater impact on the same area?
Exactly, on the residents. So because they would be further away, because they'd be higher up, the signal, it would be, I think you could agree with me that it would be less impact.
Less impact, yes. Nowhere around the site. We put, the FCC recommends, because of the nature of, of propagation, and the fact that energy sources diminish the further away you get, the FTC recommends out to 500 feet in all directions. All right, beyond that, the numbers always diminish more and more and more. Between 0 feet and 500 feet, there could be minor variations in, uh, energy, in what they call power density levels, the signal strength. Because of the nature of, of an antenna, um, I'm going to hold this up and hope you can see it. This is what's called the vertical discrimination characteristic of the antenna. The antenna was sitting this way, pointing this way, your, uh, your 3 o'clock. The bulk of the energy goes straight out horizontally. These are called lobes, the bubbles that stick out from the center. The bulk of the energy goes straight out horizontally with lesser and lesser in the down, in the down angles. Because of the fact that there's a variation, it's not linear and uniform, between 0 and 500 feet, you'll get a small variation. It might drop down, dip up a little, and drop down more. But beyond 500 feet, inevitably, the number just keeps going down. Beyond 500 feet, the lobes have less to do with it, and then it's purely distance. Make sense? So, at those distances-
So if you're 500 feet away, you're up, you would be considered-
No, actually, at any distance from these, from these proposed antennas, you will be fine. Did they have a copy of this?
Yes.
Ah, somewhere in your package, you should have a copy of this, and on page-
Uh, yeah, I have it packed, and I recall seeing something, and I just wanted to, you to clarify the difference between the two items that I brought up.
All right. But slight variations in, in topography? Uh, the FCC says variations to topography are not going to severely adversely reflect, reflect, um, adverse affect the calculations, all right, because it's just, it's not enough. You're further enough away and you're, regardless of height, that you'll still be okay. Elevation, not height. All right? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to let them finish first, and you can rebuttal when they're done. Thank you.
In addition, I just also want to note, um, there was a comment regarding modifications to the facility, and going, you know, forward, if Verizon or any other carrier sought to modify this facility if it's approved, um, they would have to-
File for a permit application with the town, and they'd also have to perform the same type of calculations that were performed this time, um, anticipating what the difference in the modifications would be. So if there was different equipment, different antennas, those things would also have to be taken into consideration, and another evaluation would have to be done, and they would have to be compliant with the FCC's regulations, uh, or we wouldn't be able to go forward. The Town Buildings Department would also have to approve it, so we wouldn't be able to just modify, um, you know, as we wanted without any other approvals. Um, and just to restate, um, you know, according to the Telecommunications Act of 1996, I think this, someone had mentioned or commented what, uh, law, federal law it was. So, according to the Telecommunications Act of 1996, since the FCC has promulgated a standard with respect to radio frequency emissions, and this site, um, as we've demonstrated, is well below the FCC standard, this board or any other board is preempted from considering RF emissions, uh, with respect to any zoning application. So I just wanted to note that for you. Um, in addition, there were a couple of comments regarding, um, the evaluation of alternate sites, and also, uh, need for the proposed facility. And I'd like to bring up Martin Lavin, who is our RF expert, to basically go over a little bit of an overview of our current gap in service, um, and discuss why this site is ideally located in order to remedy the gap based upon our existing facilities, um, other co-location opportunities that are located within the town, and our, you know, our need in this area. So it's Martin, you could just-
Sir, please state and spell your name, give your business address, and state your qualifications.
Uh, Martin Lavin, C-Square Systems, RF consultant for Verizon. Uh, business address, 65 Dartmouth Drive, Auburn, New Hampshire. Uh, qualifications, uh, my resume is attached to the, um, back of the RF report. I've been an RF engineer doing this kind of work for 30 years. The, uh, proposed site location is right here, along, uh, West Jericho Turnpike. Neighbors are here, here, and here are the nearest sites we have. This is an, an overall inventory of sites in the town. And more importantly, um, this is a, um, map showing a current network coverage. This is labeled 700 megahertz LTE. Um, people are making calls now. Um, they are generally on our original from 1980s, 800 megahertz 2G system for voice. Um, currently, less than, you know, probably 2% or 3% of our network traffic is 2G voice. Um, 95-plus percent of our traffic is LTE data, high-speed data that the whole network's moving towards. So, basically, um, that's what we're based on now, is 95% of our business, over 95% of it, is this type of data, not the 2G voice. Uh, the 2G voice has more coverage. Um, not surprised at all, people have a bit of, a good user experience there, but that's 13,000 bits per second. We're talking 20 million bits per second per user here in LTE. Um, this shows this previously built, um, facility here on top of the soccer facility, that's South Smith Town. Gets us out just about to where this site is, and that, this is where our coverage gap exists for 700 megahertz. And that's how we're filling in, extending our coverage here. Not all the way, but we're getting substantial coverage. Uh, in terms of alternates, there's one on Winston Lane here. It's the one probably everyone knows because it's covered with antennas. It's a prefab concrete building. They're just, it has two things against it. It's really the only viable alternate that we even looked at. It's, there's no place for any more antennas on the roof. And it's so, so far east, its coverage basically extends-
It's east of it?
It's east of this, and the coverage hardly extends beyond the location of the mate, of the candidate we've got. Realistically, if we look back at this one, it really only reaches a little bit past here. So there's almost no gain along West Jericho Turnpike in coverage. And, um, realistically, going out here, we didn't see any more candidates that I was aware of, of enough height or anything of that nature to, um, to help extend the coverage out here. I don't think the planning department offered any alternates either, so. Um, LTE is long-term evolution, by the way. It's, that's where every, every operator at every frequency is converging to one, um, high-speed data system. And voice, that is currently on 2G, will all be moving to LTE. It's called Voice Over LTE. Going from circuit switch to packet switch is the, is the real difference there. And to blend it in with the high-speed data would be more spectrally efficient.
Can I ask a question about the map?
Anybody, after he's done, can come up and-
Can you keep the map out though, so I can ask a question about that thing?
They'll show it, they'll bring it, they'll bring it over.
Just to clarify speeding about the map, and Martin, if you could just confirm now, the white areas show an area where we have a current deficiency, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And then if you flip up to the next page, we see the blue and green?
Green is in building coverage, uh, blue is in vehicle coverage, as we define it. And white is not, is not reliable coverage.
So that particular map that's shown right now is what the coverage would be if the application was granted?
To extend the coverage along West Jericho. And it gets hemmed in on both sides, of course, because of the terrain, which I guess I don't have a plot of that, but there's the hills on both sides, just leave you with a ribbon of coverage along the road there. Basically, there's no coverage to be gained back here with the hill behind it, so they're looking this way and this way. Um, so, even in terms of RF exposure, the antennas are facing away from the houses behind them. Um, so the, I believe, I don't want to step on your report. The, that maximum, okay, the maximum exposure was found on the street, in front of the building. The exposure behind would be much less.
These, uh, these antennas with, are, I mean, you don't, like, the first time you see antennas are out. We've, these antennas are used already? Verizon already uses these panel antennas?
Yes.
Yes.
So, why are we using, I mean, I can understand a calculated number based on terrain, but why not an actual RF number based on the panel we're using?
As a general, um, RF testing cannot be done until the facility is activated and on-site. So, we, there are models that have been developed, uh, by the FCC, um, under the regulations that they use to calculate the potential RF emissions, um, because you can't get, you can't go out there and test something that doesn't exist. Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So they have these panel antennas already in use?
Yes, but it's going to depend on the site, the topography, the area, and so on and so forth.
Saying that, you know, you can use your calculator, you can use a calculated number based on terrain, but they have to have, if was, it was at a flat plain, the actual number is based on the equipment they're already using. And then you can have your calculated number based on, you know, you can have your actual based on flat terrain, and then you can have your calculator based on, you know?
And I would defer to, yeah, Martin, can, I think, I think you're discussing emissions right now, right? So I would ask Dan to come back up, I mean, Dave to come back up, I'm sorry.
Uh, Dave Collins, Pinnacle Telecom Group, RF emissions. All right, as Martin stated, the antennas are following and aimed, uh, up and down, or east and west along, uh, Jericho Turnpike. And, uh, the calculations that we make are, again, we spoke about the conservatism of it. Um, we, the calculations at ground level are such that it's as if no matter where you stood around the antennas, it was like you were standing, uh, exposure-wise, that you were standing directly in front of that main beam of the antenna that I showed you, that would look like an ink plot.
No, I understand.
All right, but, and again, various, um, mild topographical changes are, are not a great deal. It's not as if, remember, we're dealing with, uh, uh, 10, 9%, a little bit more, we'd have to be more than 11 times higher than that for a minor terrain change. And for, for, you know, 30, 40 meters, it's, it's insufficient to call, especially at any distance, it's insufficient.
It would be negligible based upon the terrain that's out there?
Yes, yes. Okay?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just kind of curious why they don't use an actual number and then use a calculated number after it? Why just use a calculated number?
The actual number-
I think it would be clear, I think it would be a clearer application.
Every side is different, all right, because the, the, the operating parameters could change, but chiefly, one of the major parameters is height. Where, where, how high, how high above the ground in a particular area did you mount your antennas? That's a large input to the variability of the, with the numbers.
So you're saying if you're going to do an actual measurement, you have to do a measurement at 1 foot, 2 feet, 3 feet, 4 feet?
Oh, no, no, no.
In other words, you get-
Not, not vertically, horizontally away from it. Let's suppose you folks approve this, and it does go up. Measurements would show, we would then perform measurements at street level all around the area, on every, every place that we could gain, uh, a non-trespassing type thing. Or if they were, uh, concerned residents, they would let us on their property, we could take measurements. Uh, but that, that would then be, uh, compared to the, uh, these, and invariably, the numbers, even with the variations in terrain, the numbers that we quote from a calculation because of the extreme conservancy, conservatism, is, is, these numbers are going to be higher. The calculated numbers will be higher than measured numbers, even accounting for a terrain change.
So what I'm saying, different levels of feet, that's terrain, the terrain change. You'd have to, you'd have to measure it every single elevation in order to get a complete picture?
No, not true. That would be, the difference between 1 foot and 5 feet is, is, yes, the same thing, 1 feet and a couple of stories worth of building feet. Um, it, the measurements themselves, because you would be standing on different elevations as you went around and did the measurements, that would account. You'd be climbing up a hill. Now, your relationship to where the antenna elevation is, you're a little bit higher, you'll get a reading. But nonetheless, I stand by my statement that the numbers calculated for the entire area are going to be higher than those that would be measured. Because we, we base this always on Verizon's maximum capability. The antennas may not be set at that. They may not need to be set at that based on the needs of that site.
So you're saying in your experience, the actual-
Yes, I have done this.
What's going to be humid there is actually going to be less than what's calculated?
Yes. And we, and I, that's based on experience. I have done that on more than one occasion.
Okay.
Okay?
One comment or observation. It was previously mentioned by one of the previous speakers that emissions are not to be used in evaluating this at the local level. Is that correct?
No, I think what this, what they said is under federal law-
Yes.
If the emissions come within the federal minimum, the local municipality cannot deny it based upon the emission's grounds. I believe that's what the law says.
Yes.
That federal law preempts us, our ability to act on that issue, as long as you meet the federal requirements.
Once proven, once it's been demonstrated that the site is compliant with the rules and regulations set forth by the FCC in terms of exposure- Then we should not consider that?
You cannot consider it, you could not, you can't deny, uh, based on- You can't deny it based on that, because federal law takes that power away from us, is what you're saying?
Yes, that's the truth. That's the law.
Because of all the reasons that that could be issued, federal law takes away from the law. Ma'am, before you come up, um, I just want to, let's see if the applicant has anything else further to, to state?
None.
Nothing further?
No.
Okay. Ma'am, if you have anything you want to state, and it was also somebody who wanted to see a map, I believe?
I thought we prefer, so she can handle it.
Okay.
Okay, um-
Restate your name quickly. Restate, restate your name.
Barbara Morris, 1 Bayberry Lane.
And I'm going to reiterate only because the questions weren't answered. Um, so, well, one of the points was, there's already a facility at Mayfair, yes?
And, no, and everybody, actually, continue.
Yeah, ma'am, if, if everybody, if you're going to speak, you have to come up and, everybody has to come up and give their, give their name and identify who's speaking, because everything's being taken down as, on the record here. So if it's going to be a conversation, the sonographer has to be able to identify who's involved in the conversation.
Um, well, again, if, if, I'll just make the point that I was trying to make, which was-
Uh, I, it's my understanding that the measurements taken at the 30 meters are straight ahead, you know, at 30, 30 meters. And it's my understanding that it gets worse as it, uh, gets higher, um, that it emits more at a higher altitude. And so my question was, who's going to measure the measurement of 40 to 44 meters where all the homes are located? And also, um, in their own analysis, it says the street level analysis shows a maximum RF level of 9.1342% at that 30-meter elevation. However, now, this is in their report. The rooftop analysis shows the calculated RF levels potentially exceed the FCC MPE limit. So they're putting barriers around it, on the, around the antenna. However, what will those barriers do when they slowly turn up that 9.1342% that no one is going to monitor except for them, because they don't need to ask for permits? And what happens to that rooftop level? And how much do those barriers protect that while they slowly turn it up? All right, to their 100%, to get maximum coverage in those white areas? So I would like that question answered.
Well, you may or may not get it answered. That's up to the applicant, whether they want to respond to that or not. But I will just state, so we can be clear, there's been a lot of talk about their radio frequency emissions, and I believe, um, what has been stated is accurate, is that the federal law provides that if the facility is within the federal limits, the local municipality is preempted from denying the application based on that ground. The federal law takes that power away from us, which I believe is the correct statement of the federal law.
As demonstrated in the FCC compliance report, Verizon Wireless has provided-
Verizon Wireless has provided evidence that the proposed small cell facility is in compliance with the FCC regulations. And if we were to modify the facility, we would be required to obtain permits and also demonstrate that the facility continues to be in compliance with the FCC regulations. And since the facility will be in compliance with the FCC regulations, as you said before, it board is preempted and cannot deny an application based solely alone on that. And that's pretty much the end of our, we don't have any further comments. Again, you know, we respectfully submit that we have met all the requirements necessary for the issuance of the Tier Two special exception permit. And then a grant of this permit would be in accordance with the town's wireless ordinance, New York State law, the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996. As I said, you know, since the FCC has promulgated a standard with respect to radio frequency emissions, and we're below that standard, we do comply. And at this time, we respectfully request that the board close the hearing, issue the negative, adopt the negative declaration, and grant the Tier Two special exception permit in accordance with the recommendations made by the Planning Department in its planning memos dated March 4th, 2018, and today, March 23rd, 2018.
Are there any questions for any members of the board at this point? All right, can we have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Anybody else, Jimmy out there?
We were talking about the map. I thought that you were going to.
She said she didn't need to see it.
Right, so I didn't ask at that point, but can I go up to the map? Is that allowable?
You want, sure. Please give you, please go back to the microphone, sir. I'll give your name again for the record. We have to have it.
Thank you. So, your name?
Take the mic.
You can take the microphone out of there. There you go.
Joe Cadron.
Your address also, please.
My address is, well, absurd with five, oh, drawing, I'm in it potentially.
You go with that?
Yeah, same address.
Correct. This is Wynden, and this is the tower. And I'm not, to be corny about this, and I'm not going to mark up your map.
Don't put any marks on that, please.
But at the bottom of the star is where my daughter will be sitting. I know that we've heard that the FCC has put the government, not our government here, but the government, the federal government, has put some restrictions on your decision-making. So, we have to come up with another route. So, over the last two weeks, I've been calling attorneys to find out what's going on. And I've gotten a couple of great comments. But the one that's most important is, do you know that the three favorite words for real estate, or the three most important words is location, location, location? So, this attorney told me, you now have three new words, sell, sell, sell. We're going to be sitting underneath a tower that we can't fight because of the federal regulations. Although we do have a body here, we have a state, and our states do have their own rules. And I don't know how this all precipitated in 68, is it? 1968?
1996.
96? So, we're talking many years back. And I guess no one has challenged it yet. But we know that there are health hazards. We wouldn't be going through this tonight. There wouldn't be documentation showing that there's going to be birth defects. I get it, there's a low chance, it's one-tenth of. But if Grace is sitting there for the next 10 years, one-tenth by 10, and I know the math is not going to work out the same way statistically. But she's going to be sitting there with radiation for the next 10 years. And I don't know if that's particularly, if we're going back to the word serious, which is why you had the application, is this a serious issue? Or is this a cosmetic issue? Is the real estate value of all of these houses in this area going to plummet? Now, plummet's dramatic. But are we going to lose value on the houses? Because are you, and I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but we are neighbors. So, is Elizabeth going to move in if she sees, as she's driving up that hill, hey, what's on top of that building? Oh, there's towers. Honey, let's not go there. So, anybody that's in childbearing ages is going to look. So, when I was first looking, there's power lines that run through Dix Hills, across Deer Park Avenue, that run down the border between Deer Park and Dix Hills, and then come into Comac. And I said to my real estate agent, anywhere you want, but not underneath the towers. Those houses were not going to be something that I would buy. So, right out of the bat, by putting these antennas up, I'm going to minimize the amount of people that will come looking for my mom's house one day when she's not there. So, the value is going to be lost because there's a serious issue or a cosmetic issue. So, I guess the next, and I'm hopefully going to grant this to us, some time to really digest and look at, as, as Tim was saying, there are other locations. We're not saying that we shouldn't have this. But maybe not right next to a house, right next to Grace sitting there at the pool. There's a whole lot of land out there. It doesn't have to be right there. Do we need it? I don't know. Do you want it? Yes, you do. But there are other things that are going to be complicated because of putting this in. So, I hope that you can hear all of us asking you tonight. One, give us the time so we can further research and find other ways. Maybe, as Tim was saying, to help out, find a location. Maybe they'd be willing to try the same. But I don't think it's going to be in the best interest of my family, nor the neighbors, to have this thing in their backyard. Lou, Anthony? I went through four attorneys of practices, four.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Any questions, members of the board? Any comment at the, yes?
Yes.
If the applicant does did everything right, under federal law, we have to grant them their application.
No, I think, no, but my understanding of the law is, we're not here for no purpose. We have reasons that we're here, otherwise we wouldn't be here. My understanding of the law is as to the issue of the radio frequency emission. Under federal law, if they meet the minimum standard set by the federal government, we can't deny it for that reason.
Right.
So, even if people feel that it's too high or not, we can't, we are preempted by federal law for denying it for that reason. But we're not here for no reason. But we can't say it based on that reason because federal law preempts the state and local authorities from denying it based upon that ground. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's what our whole conversation about this proposal.
Correct, correct, pretty much, yes.
Just to clarify, and in response.
Thanks, Jimmy.
And to clarify.
We have submitted a, an appraisal report that is certified by a New York state, certified general real estate appraiser, indicating that there will not be, it would, this proposed facility would not negatively impact or affect, yes, the property values. It is dated May 9th. Mike Lynch is the real estate appraisal, appraiser, and he also provided testimony at the prior hearing as such. So, just to clarify the record on that matter. So, at this time, I just reiterate our request to close the public hearing, issue, adopt the negative declaration, and issue the special exception permit.
Thank you. I just, Ms. Murray, did you check on that one resident that they were talking about? Was that within the 200 feet or not?
That resident is not listed on the 200 radius.
Not on the list, not on our list, okay. The list that was provided to the applicant.
That's right.
All right, thank you. Motion to close the public hearing, please?
In the matter of special exception petition, TC.
Just want to address what you just brought up.
If you want. Just give your name, please, again, ma'am? I know it's redundant, but it has to be given to the record.
Barbara Morris, still for the time being, live at One Bayberry Lane. As far as Mr. Lynch's report of nine houses, I have a lot of questions about that. Is he here tonight?
Is he what? I am sorry, I didn't know you.
Mr. Lynch, the person who did the.
Yes, he's here.
Okay.
However, if you want to just get your.
Yeah, you make your point, and if they feel that they need to address it, they will.
Okay, so, he brought up nine houses that sold despite the fact that there were towers or facilities, or whatever you want to call it, located in the area. Did those people buying those homes, were they aware that it was located there? Was it disclosed to them that it was located, that they were located there? Was it just a fluke that they sold? Were they in our area? Were they even around here? Because people tend to be a little bit more savvy, Long Island. So, what is, you know, that has a lot of holes in it. When I went to look at the file, yes, I'm the one person that looked at the file, it was this thick. I don't know what other questions I have. I had two weeks to look through a file this thick. And that's not enough time for a layperson like me to look through a file this thick. I, we need more time. Thank you.
You seem to be somewhat familiar with the real estate appraisers report. Was that one of the things that you did get a chance to review?
No, I didn't get a chance. I just remember from what he said the last time.
You're quoting from the hearing, you mean?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, motion to close the public hearing, please?
In the matter of special exceptions.
Before we do that, Allison, you have something you want to say?
Okay.
Now, motion to close the public hearing?
In the matter of special exception petition, TC 2018-02, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None, the hearing is closed. The first resolution is the secret negative declaration as recommended by our Department of Environment and Waterways. Please a motion on that resolution.
In the matter of special exception petition, TC 2018-02, I move that we adopt the secret negative declaration as recommended by the Department of.
Waterways.
Waterways.
As read.
As read.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Secret negative resolution is adopted. And then on the resolution on the application itself?
In the matter of special exception petition, TC 2018-02, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? The resolution is adopted, the matter is concluded.
I voted aye, just because we were preempted by the Feds.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
This is what New York states.
You're ashamed, you all should be ashamed of yourselves. How close do you live to yourself, Allison? Do you want to be?
Sir, this is not my application.
That's not, evidence, right? You don't give my vote. You have a big smile on your face.
He's not even with us.
Yeah, 100% right, you know?
He's not with us.
You can have this, please, please.
Sir, please take it outside.
This is not my application.
The matter is over.
Lou, Lou, easy, come on.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, please?
Okay, next item on the agenda is a telecommunications application, TC 2018-01. Number one, oh, excuse me, TC, yeah, oh, one, sorry, I have the wrong one out. Number one, reason for report. The planning board will conduct a public hearing on May 23rd, 2018 to consider the above referenced application for a special, special exception for a personal wireless service facility pursuant to chapters 242 and 322-30.3B of the Smithtown Town Code. Two, the applicant is New York S M S A Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, care of Amada Law Group, P L L C 666 Old Country Road, Suite 901 Garden City, New York, 11530. The site is a polygon-shaped parcel developed with a one-story multi-tenant retail building with related parking located at 437 North Country Road in St. James. The site currently has no wireless facilities allocated on the building. Four, zoning and land use. Site is owned central business, retail, cleaners and salon. North is Village of Head of the Harbor with a nursery garden center. South is central business, restaurant, multi-tenant retail. East is our tenant central business, single-family homes, multi-tenant retail. And west is Village of Head of the Harbor, single-family homes. The staff report. Number one, description of proposal, the personal wireless service facility. This application is a proposal to install a personal wireless service facility consisting of six wireless telecommunication panel antennas and associate equipment concealed inside a cupola on the roof of existing one-story multi-tenant retail building. A, other personal wireless service facility sites in the area are monopole installations on Southern Boulevard in Wisconsin, Landing Avenue in Smithtown, and North Country Road in Village of Head of the Harbor. B, the nearest three Verizon sites are located on the Suffolk County Water Authority Tower on Astro Avenue in St. James, a monopole installation on North Country Road in the Village of Head of the Harbor, and a monopole installation on Landing Avenue in Smithtown. All of the above referenced locations are multiple carrier sites. Location, the proposed facility is not located in or near any identified avoidance areas such as floods hazard zone, wetlands or parks. B, the proposed facility is located in an opportunity site because the proposed personal wireless service facility, antennas and related equipment would not, would be mounted on the roof of an existing one-story retail building. C, therefore, the proposed facility meets the location standards. Sighting. A, the proposed facility meets the sighting standards because the antennas and related pertinences would be mounted inside a cupola on the roof, which is set back approximately 120 feet from North Country Road. The applicant is proposing to replace the existing cupola with a new cupola constructed of RF transparent screening material to block the antennas from view from the surrounding properties and North Country Road. The RF material will be finished to match the original cupola to help reduce any visual impact. B, while the proposal does not appear to have adverse visual impacts on the surrounding area, additional screening of the proposed facility, including additional perimeter plantings along North Country Road, may be required at the time of site plan review. Design, the antennas would be mounted inside a cupola on roof. The extension of the antennas and the cupola will be limited to a six-foot, will be limited to six feet above the height of the existing cupola to ensure the overall height of the proposal is kept to a minimum to reduce or eliminate any visual impact to the adjacent residential and commercial properties. B, the proposed antennas are internally mounted panel antennas. C, all related equipment would be installed within the cupola and in the building's attic. D, the antennas and equipment will be screened from view by RF transparent screening material that will be painted to match the existing cupola. E, therefore, the proposal meets the design standards. Further review of the design will be incorporated in the site pan, site plan approval process to assure that materials, color, size, screening, landscaping, et cetera, will minimize the visual impact of the personal wireless service facility, panels and related equipment. Alternatives analysis. A, the application does not include proposed alternatives. B, upon review of the proposal and surrounding area, planning has no alternatives to propose. Description of attachments. Attached are a map of the site and surrounding area identifying other personal wireless service facilities and scanned copies of a site plan and elevations of the proposed rooftop installation submitted with the application. Recommended decision, findings of facts. One, the proposal meets the location standards in that it is an opportunity site. Proposal meets the sighting standards in that it is mounted inside a cupola on the roof of an existing structure. Three, the proposal meets the design standards in that it would be mounted on the roof of an existing structure and will not extend more than six feet above the building's existing cupola. Four, the proposal meets the safety standards per section 242-5D in that it meets the town of Smithtown Building Code, which incorporates sections 3108.4 of the New York State Building Code for wind loads in accordance with T I A- E I A 22, and the facility is not roof-mounted. B, the Planning Department recommends approval of this application. The board must await a secret determination from the Department of Environment and Waterways before taking any action to approve this petition.
I'd like to make my appearance to the record. Simone Freeman of Amada Law Group, P L L C 666 Old Country Road, Suite 901 Garden City, New York, 11530. I am appearing here tonight on behalf of the applicant, New York S M S A Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless in connection with the proposed small cell facility to be located at 437 North Country Road, St. James, New York. As a matter of housekeeping, I have a, our notice materials here for you as well as. Notice materials for you, as well as a number of reports for submission to the board. So, we have.
Is that the affidavit of posting you just handed up?
Yes, the affidavit posting.
And mail, and.
And mailing, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I, and I also just submitted a copy of the planning department memorandum dated May 18, 2018, that was read into the record. An engineering report prepared by Daniel R. Flasko, P E P C, dated May 8, 2018, together with a structural certification prepared by Structural Consulting Services, P C, dated April 11, 2018. A planning, zoning and visual impact analysis prepared by V H B Engineering Surveying Landscape Architecture, P C, dated May 2018. A real estate consulting report prepared by Lynch Appraisals dated May 23, 2018. A copy of the antenna site FCC RF compliance and assessment report dated January 3, 2018, prepared by Pinnacle Telecom Group and previously filed with the town planning department on March 20, 2018. And a copy of the RF report dated March 12, 2018, prepared by C Squared Systems, L L C, and previously filed with the town planning department on March 20, 2018. Now, I have with me a number of experts that are here to testify as to the information that is in the reports. However, first, I just like to go forward and summarize our application for you. Verizon Wireless is a public utility under the laws of the state of New York. Verizon Wireless holds and maintains six federal licenses to operate its network in this area. Verizon Wireless is respectfully requesting tier-two special exception, special exception approval pursuant to section 322-30.3 subsection B of the Town of Smithtown Code for its proposed small cell facility at this property. As indicated in the RF report submitted with the application, there is a serious service deficiency in Verizon Wireless's coverage and capacity in this area. As such, the proposed small cell facility is needed in order to address the existing service deficiencies within the vicinity of the property. Once the proposed small cell facility is constructed and activated, the existing deficiencies will be eliminated. The property is situated within a commercial corridor located along northern, North Country Road, surrounded by a mixture of commercial, agricultural and residential development. The property consists of approximately 0.79 acres and is zoned central business. The property is located on the west side of North Country Road, directly across from the intersection of North Country Road and Clinton Avenue. The property is improved with a one-story multi-tenant retail plaza building, associated paved driveways and parking lots, and landscaped areas abutting the street. Verizon Wireless proposes to replace the existing 36-foot, 3-inch cupola and extend the same by approximately 6 feet 7 inches to a total height of 42 feet 10 inches. The replacement cupola will be designed to match the existing cupola and will be visually similar. Six panel antennas will be mounted and completely concealed within the replacement cupola. In addition, nine remote radio heads and ancillary equipment will be concealed within the building's attic. Finally, two GPS antennas and a cage access ladder and safety railings, as well as associated pertinences, will be mounted to the rear of the building and will be, not be visible from publicly accessible roads within the surrounding location. As indicated in the planning department memo dated May 18, 2018, the proposed facility complies with the location, sighting, design and safety standards set forth in the wireless ordinance. And the planning department has recommended approval of the application. As indicated in the planning memo, pursuant to Town Code Section 242-5 subsection A, the proposed small cell facility complies with the town's location standards as the existing building's rooftop is considered an opportunity site. In addition, pursuant to Town Code Section 242-5 subsection B, the proposed small cell facility complies with the town's sighting standards as it will be mounted within the replacement cupola in the same location as the existing cupola located on the building's rooftop. And it will only project approximately 6 feet 7 inches above the height of the existing cupola in order to reduce or eliminate any visual impact to the adjacent properties. Moreover, pursuant to Town Code Section 242-5 subsection C, the proposed small cell facility complies with the town's design standards as the antennas and associated pertinences will be completely concealed within the replacement cupola. As previously noted, the proposed replacement cupola will be designed to match the existing cupola that's currently at the site. And since it would only extend a little over six feet above the existing cupola, the visual character of the replacement cupola would not differ significantly from the existing visual character of the retail plaza. The replacement cupola would also be lower than the average tree height in the area with intervening buildings, infrastructure and mature vegetation reducing its visibility from roads and properties within the vicinity. In fact, the photo simulations that were prepared by A P T Engineering and the planning zoning and visibility report prepared by V H B, which have been submitted in connection with this application, demonstrate that visibility would be limited to a quarter mile of the subject property along the North Country Road corridor with no visibility beyond that distance due to intervening vegetation and existing structures. Furthermore, the ancillary equipment will be located within the existing building's attic and completely concealed therein. The caged access ladder and GPS units will also be located in an inconspicuous location at the rear of the building, which will not be visible to publicly accessible locations within the area. In addition, the small cell facility is the minimum height required in order to remedy the existing deficiencies in service and the least intrusive means to do so. As noted in the RF report, the existing service deficiency in the area is approximately 0.7 miles north to south and approximately 0.8 miles east to west. Finally, pursuant to the Town Code Section 242-5 subsection D, the proposed small cell facility complies with the safety standards in that is designed to meet or exceed the requirements set forth by the New York State Building and Fire Codes and the Town of Smithtown Code, as well as all applicable FCC and FAA requirements. As the maximum RF exposure limit is, as maximum exposure is 10.581% of the FCC's maximum permissible exposure limit, which is more than nine times below the permissible FCC limit. According to the Telecommunications Act of 1996, since the FCC has promulgated a standard with respect to radio frequency admissions and this site will be below such standard, then this board or any other board is preempted from considering RF permissions with respect to any zoning application. At this time, I would like to call up a couple of our experts just to provide a summary of their reports that were submitted tonight. So I will call Dan Flasko first. He is a New York State licensed engineer who will explain, among other things, the sighting of the facility, the type of facility to be constructed and its compliance with certain codes and structural stability.
You dropped something there.
That's from the prior application. Ms. Freeman already, I'm sorry, Daniel Flasko.
Business address?
94 Steuben Boulevard, Wisconsin, New York.
Thank you.
Ms. Freeman already gave a clear picture of the site. I'd like to just add a couple of things for your references. The distance from the building to the property lines was something you asked at the last application, so I thought I would reiterate those on this application. From the building to the west property line, it varies from 49.3 feet to 49.5 feet. That's the building to the property line. The cupola is in the middle of the building. The distance from the, to the, to the north property line is, varies from 23.3 to 32.5 feet. And the distance to the side south property line varies from 6.3 feet to 8.3 feet. The distance actually from the cupola to the rear property line is 73 feet approximately. The distance from the cupola where the antennas will be installed to North Country Road, perpendicular to North Country Road, is approximately 137 feet. The distance from the cupola to the north property line is approximately 80 feet. And the distance from the cupola to the south property line is approximately 56 feet. I can't use that scale because that scale is a 60, 60. I got it. I got it. The width, the length of the building or the width of the building along North Country Road is approximately 105 feet. The depth, there's a couple little jogs in the building. I'm going to say, yeah, the, the building basically ranges from 50 feet to approximately 56 feet, plus or minus. And it's fairly rectangular in shape. Just to give you some height information on the antennas themselves, the antennas will be placed inside the cupola. The top elevation of the panel antennas would be approximately 40 feet above ground. The top elevation of the replacement cupola will be approximately 42 feet 10 inches above ground, which is approximately six feet plus extension on the existing cupola. So those are the elevations. The wall elevations, I'm pointing to the wall, the interior wall of the building, that elevation is approximately 22.4 feet above ground. And the GPS units or the other antennas that will be placed will be placed at 24.4, 24 feet 4 inches above ground level. And the top of the existing roof peak itself is 26 feet 2 inches. So the GPS antennas and all of the, the ancillary equipment will be lower than the peak of the existing roof. The antennas will be within the cupola, which is obviously above the peak of the roof, but in the extended cupola area of approximately six feet. If there are any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
The antennas are going to be six feet above the existing part of the building now?
The cupola is going to be raised six feet. Just the cupola portion, not the peak of the roof. The cupola itself will be made bigger. If anybody is familiar with the, the office building on, I'm going to say, Middle Country Road and Terry Road on the east side, that had a cupola added to that building that was extended also, just to give you an idea of what it would look like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call John Ellsworth of V H B Engineering Surveying Landscaping Architecture, P C, to discuss the aesthetic planning and environmental impacts of the proposed small cell facility.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Ellsworth, Chief Environmental Planner for V H B, 100 Motor Parkway in Hopg. And I'm here this evening to discuss a report that V H B prepared. It's actually two reports. One-mile visibility study, which is actually an appendix to the overall report. And the overall report is called the Planning, Zoning and Visual Impact Analysis. I'll just call it the planning report for simplicity. I'll start with the visibility study. That's the top aerial photograph here. We went out in a car in, within a one-mile radius of the site, driving all the public roadways to see where the cupola, existing cupola and counting for the increase of about six feet, would be visible. And in the center of the aerial, you can see there are numbers. And this, this is a figure in, in your report. And it shows the extent of visibility of the cupola. It goes about a quarter mile to the north and actually only about a sixth of a mile to the south. And even in the portion to the north where it's visible, you have to peek through tree limbs to see it. It was only partially visible. And this was done in April, so the leaves were not in bloom at the time. So if you went out there today, if you did this diagram, it would be shrunk down even more. There would be hardly any stretch along North Country Road where you could see it. There's also a little part, and again, this is in April, where you go up the side roads, you can see it for a short distance. Clinton and the one further to the east, just for very short distances. And the one to the east, it's only partially visible through trees and between the houses on that side of the road. The, that's basically it for visibility study. The planning report included the visibility study, but it also included an analysis of the code requirements for facilities of this nature. And also, we looked at the visual simulations that were prepared by A P T. And a lot of this was already discussed, so I'm just going to go through the, in a little more detail, the simulations. This is a base map of where the simulations were taken from. And again, this is in the report that was submitted to you today. Visible from. So this is a before and after right in front of the site. And this is the existing condition here. And you can see the difference is the top part of the cupola is just extended by, it's six, it's six feet. But if you were to go out there, if this facility were built and you would go out there and look at it, it would just look like a regular cupola. The only reason you know it's different is you have the before to compare it to. And then as you go to the south, you could see the cupola. And here's a picture of the extended cupola. And heading a little further to the south, you can see the cupola between the tree and the utility poles. And there's the extended cupola. And then from this location, just slightly further to the south, the cupola would be blocked by this tree. And again, this is in April, so it's storing leaf off. So when these leaves fill in, the visibility of the cupola would be less. And this other one is from 50 acre court, and you can't see the cupola from there. And then the last sets of the simulations. As you're headed to the north, actually closing, you remember there was a little section of the original aerial photo where it's blocked by these existing trees. And then you can see, as you get into it, you can see that, you can see the existing cupola in this as the simulation of the slightly extended cupola. Based upon our analysis, and this is going to, I'm going to go through it quickly because it's been mentioned in the, by the planning department and also by Ms. Freeman. Based on our analysis, and it's in our report, we conclude that the proposed facility would not result in significant adverse impacts at the subject location or in the surrounding area with respect to visual resources, land use, zoning or community character. It meets the location standards in that it's, it is an opportunity site. It's on a existing building rooftop, and it's not in an avoidance area. It meets the sighting standards in that the antennas would be located, again, on an existing building rooftop and would be completely concealed within the RF transparent replacement cupola. And it meets the design standards in that the replacement cupolas containing the antennas would match the existing cupola in style and materials. And the proposed replacement cupola would comply with the height standard in the G B district and would be the minimum height necessary to achieve the signal coverage objectives of the project. Additionally, I would like to note that... Additionally, I would like to note that, as has been pointed out, there are no viable alternatives to meet the project objectives. The ancillary, ancillary equipment, the access ladder, the chain barrier fence and conduits will be sighted around at the backside of the building, so it will be visible from North Country Road. Views of the proposed replacement cupola would be screened, except from certain locations by the, as you saw in the simulations and by our one-mile radius study, existing trees and buildings. And it would be sighted on a commercial property within a commercially zoned strip along North Country Road. And that's it for my presentation. I would certainly be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Next, I'd just like to call Mike Lynch, a large appraiser, who will address the impacts on real estate values in the area.
Michael Lynch, 15 Dewey Street, Huntington, New York. I'm here as state-certified real estate appraiser on this application. I inspected the property a couple of weeks ago, walked the area, took a series of photographs. I did prepare a report with my findings. As you know, the building is a small retail plaza building on the westerly side of North Country Road opposite Clinton Avenue in St. James. It's on a point seven-nine acre parcel, again, on a CB-zoned parcel. Its surrounding uses are mixed. Opposite to the, to the east, along the eastern side of North Country Road, you have a residence, and you also have to the southeast, you have a strip retail center. To the south, you have an abutting restaurant. To the north, you have a commercially zoned, commercial nursery. And to the east is a residence that's on a flag lot that's accessed from North Country Road, and that would be the nearest residence. Again, that's to the east of the property. To the rear of the property is a paved parking area, as well as a front parking area along North Country Road. I've looked at other uses, or other, rather, other rooftop sites throughout Nassau and Suffolk Counties, including the town of Smithtown. As noted, this is going to be a completely concealed site within a like cupola, albeit at a higher height, but visually, it's about as good as they get as far as disguising these antennas. And as Mr. Ellsworth indicated, this is a architecturally similar, like-type structure in the same location on the retail plaza's rooftop. It'll just be approximately six feet higher. But again, visually, unless you knew the building in the before situation, you wouldn't know any different as far as the proposed RF Transparent Cupola. So, and any associated equipment with the communications facility would be located within the attic of the, of the retail plaza. Again, I've looked at these rooftop sites, mostly exposed-type antennas on rooftops throughout Nassau and Suffolk Counties, and I haven't found, and they are outlined in my report, that the presence of these facilities has had any deleterious effect to nearby property values. And again, in this situation, it is an opportunity site. We're utilizing an existing rooftop structure in an architecturally designed RF cupola. So again, outwardly, you're not going to know any different unless you knew the existing conditions prior to the construction of the facility. So should the application be granted, I don't feel there would be any deleterious effect to nearby property values. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Martin Laban, a radio frequency engineer with C-Sword Systems, who will explain the need for the public utility communication facility at this particular location, and how it will eliminate the existing service efficiency.
Martin Laban, 65 Dartmouth Drive, Auburn, New Hampshire. Very quickly, this is a depiction of the surrounding terrain here. Colors from fifty feet up to two-hundred feet in elevation, the white being the two-hundred there, and the lowest being, of course, down by the water. It's not, sorry, it's not very harsh terrain there, but it does affect propagation. This is same as we've seen before, the inventory of the sites in Smithtown, plus a one-mile buffer around the town. Sites in green are planned, sites in blue are in the town, sites in red are outside. And this is, of course, the subject site. Very quickly, this is our current network coverage, seven-hundred megahertz LTE, our high-speed data. This is the proposed site here. Green indicates in-building coverage, blue in-vehicle coverage, white is areas that don't have reliable coverage. You can see the gap along 25A there. And, there we go. The site fills in rather nicely for being a very well-concealed facility. It hooks up pretty well along here along 25A and helps reduce that gap. Also, as stated in the report, it will alleviate capacity issues we're having at Stony Brook Two, Ness Conset, and South St. James sites right now. I believe that is South St. James there, and Stony Brook Two, and the other site is over here. It'll, by taking some of this traffic, there is some service in here. I mean, the people in here are, both, all three of these sites currently have too much usage on them for the capacity they have. This site will take users off each of those sites and help alleviate that capacity exhaustion.
Questions? Thank you.
Lastly, I'd like to call Dave Collins, a Pinnacle Telecom group, who will testify as to the health and safety issues and, and that the proposed small cell facility will comply with the FCC standards for radio frequency emissions.
Good evening, Dave Collins, C-O-L-L-I-N-S, 14 Ridgedale Avenue, Cedar Knolls, New Jersey. Do I need to be qualified again, or do we just continue?
Just deem your qualifications as stated on Friday hearing, stated now as to this hearing.
Bachelor of Science in Industrial Technology from City College of New York, eighteen years experience with Pinnacle Telecom Group.
No, I was saying, you didn't have to say it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can say it again if you want, but you don't have to.
I'm not particularly proud of it, but we'll move on. Again, the federal government sets a standard for maximum permissible exposure levels of radio frequency energy around antenna sites. It is a conservative level, it only allows very low levels. It also provides a mathematical equation for determining that level, which you would then compare to the standard to see if we make it or not. We did that, we took the operating parameters for Verizon's site here, and we put the variables into the mathematical formula, made the calculations. The simplest way to describe the results is to say them in terms of a percentage, with one-hundred percent being the maximum permitted level. Having said all that, we did the calculations and came up with a maximum calculated level of ten-point-five, five-eight-one-oh percent. That is more than nine times below the level, that is the maximum permitted level allowed by the FCC. So therefore, we are in compliance by, again, a very wide margin.
Thank you.
We have no further experts, and if anyone here?
Well, we're going to give the public an opportunity as soon as you tell us you're done.
Yes.
If there's anybody here that wants to speak, we don't know that yet.
We respectfully submit that all the requirements necessary for the issue-
The issuance of the Tier Two Special Exception Approval have been met by Verizon Wireless, and the grant of the Tier Two Special Exception Permit will be consistent with New York State law and the Telecommunications Act. As such, we, the applicant respectfully requests that the planning board close the hearing, issue a negative declaration under SECRA, and grant the special use permit application as recommended by the planning department in its memo dated May eighteenth, 2018.
We can close the hearing, but we don't have the recommendations from our department on waterways on SECRIS, so we can't issue any declaration on that, and we can't, can't add on the application either. It's a similar procedure.
Mm-hmm.
So that's it?
Yes. So then we would request that you close the record for the hearing.
And the matter will be continued probably to the next meeting, which would be, I think we said, June thirteenth? All right, is there anybody present who wishes to be heard on this particular matter? See, none. Are there any questions from any members of the board on this particular matter?
Just one, a quick one. It says the maximum allowance is going to be, is it seventy percent?
No, sir.
No.
No, the max that it would ever be would be seventy percent of a hundred.
That, that is the calculated levels up on the roof. Sorry, I don't remember. Around the cupola. What's your name again, sir? Dave Collins, Pinnacle Telecom RF Compliance. The seventy percent that's quoted in the document is the calculation is made on the roof, as opposed to on the, this sloped part of the roof. It's the highest level that can be calculated based on the operating grounds of the site.
And seventy percent of the limit, you're still below the limit, so you're in compliance.
I was just kind of questioning if the antenna was turned up to maximum, the max would still be seventy percent, not a hundred.
Our calculations, our calculations, remember, I talked about the input data. We take Verizon, Verizon has a license to operate in different frequency bands, and in each frequency band, they're allowed a maximum power level. Regardless of what they use, and that's their license, they can't, they can't go above that. Regardless of what they may end up using at the site, if they fine-tune it to their needs, they can't go above that level. We perform all the calculations at the maximum level, so you get the worst possible case ever.
Are you saying that seventy percent is the method of the limited, the amount, maximum that could be put there, but you're only applying ten percent there?
No. We are, we are calculating the levels in two different areas of interest. One is street level around where the general population can walk, and the other is up on the roof, where the general population can't go there, but nonetheless, we apply the same criteria. And in each case, we are below the FCC's maximum permissible exposure limits, so we do comply in each area, both on the rooftop and at street level. At street, at ten percent, and seventy percent on the roof, yes.
Do you think, for example, if someone was working on the rooftop?
Yes, if someone was working on the rooftop, he would be safe, because he would be, he'd be, he'd be operating or doing his work in an area that's below the maximum permitted level.
It's just closer than it is on the rooftop?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, first, we needed an application, we needed a motion to close the public hearing?
Chairman, I recall the last telecommunications when we recessed the hearing, so these folks like who were here on the previous hearing could speak.
Well, the last time we did that was there was someone specifically here requesting that.
Oh, right. How did recesses occur, not as a legal requirement?
Right.
It was purely-
It was requested by someone specifically, and I don't, I can't speak for them, but I think the Department of Environment and Waterways prefers that the hearing be closed, because they want all the public comment in, and then they want to give their memo.
That's right.
That's true, but had we done so, or followed that procedure the last time, the folks who were here the earliest even would not have had the opportunity to speak. Just my point.
Yeah. Well, as I said last time, somebody was specifically requesting it, it was posted, there's nobody here requesting additional time for anything. So is there a motion to close the public hearing?
In the matter of special exception petition TC 2018 dash zero one, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second. More favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The hearing is closed? And is there a motion to recess the matter to July, I'm sorry, June thirteenth?
In the matter of special exception petition TC 2018 dash zero one, I move that we recess the matter to the June thirteenth, 2018 meeting of the planning board.
Second. More favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The matter is reset while we await the memo on the SECRIS. Thank you very much. The resolution is to be upheld in the court, but they tabled that, they closed the hearing.
Boarding is tabled and recessed, okay.
Okay, the next application is for, is for final subdivision number 1173 Platte, White Platte, Smithtown.
The applicant requests final approval to subdivide a 1.54 acre parcel into two building lots. The final map of number 1173 map of Platte and White Platte is comprised of two tax lots totaling 1.54 acres. It appears the subject property was split into two tax lots in 1987 without planning board approval. This subdivision application would legalize these two lots. Lot one has approximately 122 feet of frontage on Bianco Court, and lot two has approximately 115 feet of frontage on New York State Route 111. There is a dwelling on lot one, and lot two is vacant. The site is zone R10 and is surrounded by land zoned R10 and developed with single-family dwellings. The topography is mostly level. Elevation ranges from fifty-six feet to fifty-nine feet above sea level. The depth of groundwater is greater than ten feet, water encountered at 10.6 feet below the surface, and no wetlands exist on the property. The proposed subdivision meets all of the zoning requirements for the R10 zoning district, with the exception of the minimum rear yard setback for lot one. Lot one requires a variance to reduce the minimum rear yard setback from fifty feet to forty-nine feet. The planning board has the authority to grant such variance pursuant to Section 322 dash thirty-point-four of the zoning ordinance, and the planning department recommends approval for the following reasons. One, the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. There will be no difference in the appearance from the street, and the minimum, minimal reduction will not be visible to any of the surrounding properties. Two, the variance is not substantial in that the proposed rear yard is only two percent reduction from the required fifty feet. Three, the variance will not create an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Pursuant to Section 248 dash thirty-one B two of the subdivision regulations, the subdivisions are required to be clustered because the development will impact the following resources. One, prime agricultural soil. The Suffolk County Soil Survey identifies the soil on this property as riverhead sandy loam, zero to three percent slopes, which is in Capability Class Two. Two, it's got mature woodlands. Three, land adjacent to a state highway, New York State Route 111. And four, shall depth to groundwater less than twenty feet. The purpose of clustering development is to create buffer zones between residential environments and sources of noise pollution and traffic, preserve open space and other natural resources of remaining undeveloped land within the town, and improve traffic safety by separating vehicular and pedestrian paths. The planning department recommends the best way to achieve the above is by placing a twenty-five-foot conservation easement along New York State Route 111. This easement should remain natural and undisturbed except for driveway access. Bianco Court is a dead-end road and is identified as a residential access street, although parts of Bianco Court have sidewalks. Installing sidewalks along lot one seems unnecessary due to the low traffic volume. Lot two fronts New York State Route 111. There are no sidewalks along the stretch of New York State Route 111. Therefore, the planning department does not recommend installing sidewalks along New York State Route 111 frontage. Further, New York State Route 111 is a state road, and even if sidewalks were warranted, the town does not have the authority to require the installation of sidewalks in a state right-of-way. For these reasons, the planning department recommends that the planning board waive the requirement to install sidewalks in the subdivision. Section 248 dash twenty-four, the subdivision regulation states that each subdivision is required to show a park area of at least, of at least two acres per one hundred buildings. However, the Court of Appeals has ruled that the town cannot require the reservation of park area unless the planning board determines on a case-by-case basis that a need for parkland exists with respect to the individual subdivision. Based on the community facility study in the town's comprehensive plan, there is a need for parkland in the neighborhood in which the subdivision is situated. This subdivision's share of meeting the need is approximately 0.006 acres. In cases where the planning board determines that a suitable park cannot be located or is otherwise not practical, the subdivider is required to pay a cash equivalent prior to filing the map. Given the location and small size of this subdivision, a dedication for park space would not be practical. Therefore, the planning department recommends that the board condition final plat approval upon the submission of a park fee of $3,000, the approximate cost of 0.006 acres in the R10 zoning district. The traffic safety department has reviewed the final subdivision and finds it acceptable. The engineering department has reviewed the final subdivision and finds it acceptable with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall obtain a highway work permit from the New York State Department of Transportation for the new driveway entrance. Two, a- Two, a separate drainage system is required for the outside cellar entrance. The Highway Department has reviewed the final subdivision and finds it acceptable and offers the following comment. One, the Highway Department recommends that the driveway for lot one be moved north to avoid being over the drainage pipes. The Department of Environment and Waterways has reviewed the tree preservation and land clearing plan and finds it acceptable. They recommend the board adopt a SECRA negative declaration as well as several conditions of approval. The Planning Department has reviewed the final subdivision and finds it acceptable. The Planning Department does not recommend relocating the driveway on lot one, because the driveway has existed in the current location for at least 20 years, possibly longer, and relocating it will require the removal of trees. Pursuant to Section 239N of New York State General Municipal Law, this final application was referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. Because the subdivision was located within 500 feet of an existing state road, that's New York State Route 111, Suffolk County Department of Economic Development and Planning responded that the application is a matter for local determination. A decision of local determination should not be construed as either an approval or disapproval. Further, one, letters assuring availability of utility service have been received from the Suffolk County Water Authority and PSCEG. Two, the Smithtown Central School District has acknowledged the subdivision. Three, the amount of the inspection fees estimated at $520. Four, the amount of the park fee should be $3,000. Five, the amount of the performance bond is estimated at $6,500. Six, the amount of the cash deposit is estimated at $1,000. And seven, the amount of the performance bond to be posted is $5,500. Recommendation, the Department of Environment and Waterways offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2018, recommended SECRA declaration for number 1173, map of Platte and White Platte, whereas the Planning Board has considered the SECRA recommendation from the Department of Environment and Waterways for number 1173, map of Platte and White Platte. Now therefore, be it first resolved that the planning board, after due study and deliberation of the subject record, issue a SECRA negative declaration, determination of non-significance. An EIS is not necessary. In the matter of the application for subdivision approval by Bruce Platte for number 1173, map of Platte and White Platte, for the following reasons. A, the proposal does not appear to significantly threaten any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified and are regulated by the Environmental Conservation Law of the State of New York or Smithtown Code. B, the parcel does not appear to suffer from any severe environmental development constraints, no poor soil properties, and no unmanageable slopes. C, the small size and nature of the proposal mitigate against a significant adverse impact upon the environment. D, the proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the parcel and compatible with neighboring land uses. E, the project as proposed on the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by Bruce and Merle, licensed land surveyor, and dated January 25, 2018, provides for the retention of a significant amount of existing trees and natural vegetation upon development of the subject parcel. Such preservation shall be ensured by the placement of snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing along all limits of clearing areas. This shall be done to the satisfaction of the Environmental Protection Director, and said fencing shall be maintained in place by the applicant until the completion of all land clearing and grading activities at the subject parcel. The Planning Department recommends approval and offers the following resolutions for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2018, final plat variance for number 1173, map of Platte and White Platte, whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Bruce Platte for the following variance on lot one pursuant to Section 322-30.4 of the Building Zone Ordinance of the Code of the Town of Smithtown for subdivision number 1173, map of Platte and White Platte. Now therefore, be it first resolved that the planning board of the Town of Smithtown hereby grants a variance from the Building Zone Ordinance of the Code of the Town of Smithtown for the subdivision known as number 1173, map of Platte and White Platte as follows. Below is the modification of dimensional regulations. This table shall be shown on the final map to be filed in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. A fee of $500 shall be submitted for this variance. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2018, subdivision final plat, final approval for number 1173, map of Platte and White Platte, whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Bruce Platte to subdivide 1.54 acres into two lots. Now therefore, be it first resolved that the final plat of number 1173, map of Platte and White Platte is hereby approved, subject to the following conditions. A, performance bond in form and amount specified by a separate resolution of the planning board shall be posted for a term of two years. B, the applicant shall obtain and submit proof of a general liability insurance policy that runs concurrently with the term of the performance bond, and in accordance with other provisions of Section 248 of the Code of the Town of Smithtown Subdivision Regulations. C, inspection fee and cash deposit as established by separate resolution of the planning board shall be submitted. D, a park fee of $3,000 shall be submitted. E, the applicant shall obtain final approval of the drainage and regrading plans from the town engineer. F, a separate drainage system shall be installed for the outside cellar entrance. G, the applicant shall obtain a highway work permit from the New York State Department of Transportation for the new driveway entrance. H, a 25-foot wide conservation easement shall be placed on lot two along New York State Route 111. This easement shall remain natural and undisturbed except for driveway access. I, prior to the commencement of construction activities at the subject parcel, including land clearing or other site preparation work, the applicant shall satisfy the following conditions. One, all limits of clearing and any individual trees to be preserved within the clearing areas must be marked with snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing. Said fencing shall be located no closer to the trunk of any tree to be preserved than the drip line of said tree. This area to be preserved shall be as indicated in the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by Bruce and Merle, licensed land surveyor, dated January 25, 2018. Two, upon completion of the installation of fencing as required above, the applicant shall provide written notice to the Department of Environment and Waterways requesting inspection of the limits of clearing as marked in the field by the cited fencing. Three, the applicant shall not commence construction activities, including land clearing or other site preparation work, until the marked limits of clearing are approved in writing by the Environmental Protection Director. And four, the snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing to be used to delineate the limits of clearing shall be maintained in place by the applicant until the completion of all land clearing and grading activities at the subject parcel. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2018, authorization to sign performance bond estimate for number 1173, map of Platte and White Platte, whereas the town departments of engineering, traffic safety, highway, and planning have prepared a performance bond estimate to cover the cost of all required public improvements. Now therefore, be it first resolved that the planning, that the chairman of the planning board is authorized to sign the performance bond estimate for number 1173, map of Platte and White Platte, in the amount of $6,500, and establish an inspection fee of $520 and a cash deposit of $1,000. Therefore, the amount of the performance bond to be posted with the town shall be $5,500.
Thank you.
This is the applicant who submitted the affidavit of posting.
Kevin J. Malloy, 8 East Main Street, Kings Park, New York, 11754.
Just for the record, I wasn't with the telecommunications.
So noted.
So noted, so I don't get any bad mail. I concur with the findings of the memorandum of May 18. I spoke with the applicant, and he is ready to post the requisite dollar amounts and the bond and obtain the liability insurance.
And the affidavit of posting is in order?
Yes.
Okay, good. Anybody present who wishes to be heard on this matter? Any questions from any member of the board on this matter?
I have one. Is Bianco Court, is still going to stay the same?
Yes. Those houses have been there maybe 30 years.
So, there's not going to be no, okay.
Yeah, there's not going to be a new driveway going through, it'll be coming out onto 111.
Okay, thank you.
It's right down by Cantor Court, so it'll fit right in with the surrounding neighborhood.
Okay, no further questions? Then, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
In the matter of number 1173, map of Platte and White Platte, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Hearing is closed. Do we have a motion on the SECRA declaration?
In the matter of number 1173, map of Platte and White Platte, I move that we adopt the SECRA negative declaration as recommended by the Planning Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So adopted. We have a motion on the final plat variance.
In the matter of number 1173, map of Platte and White Platte, I move that we approve the variances as listed in the table of modifications.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So adopted. We have a motion on the subdivision final approval?
In the matter of number 1173, map of Platte and White Platte, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So adopted. And lastly, we have a motion on the performance bond estimate.
In the matter of number 1173, map of Platte and White Platte, I move that we approve the performance bond estimate as recommended by the Planning Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So adopted. Matter is concluded. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I believe, last but not least, we have the gentleman from Jason Estates. We have a recall on, is that Jason Estates? Is that called?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Jason, yeah. Oh, so, Jason Estates, number 889B, which is number 10 on our agenda, so recall on that, sir, please come on up again. Just give you a name and address again, we just give you a name, your address was in the record already.
I, Anthony Bywell.
All right, and when the matter was called earlier this evening, we noted as stated there was an issue with the date of the affidavit. We believe the issue can be rectified by having you re-swear to the affidavit today that it was posted for five days before today. Our stenographer is a notary public, and he's graciously offered to serve as a notary view, re-swearing that signature on the affidavit right now, so would you just please go to the, up to the stenographer, and we'll address that. Yeah, they don't give you too much space for it. Well, first of all, you have to sign it.
I think he could just re-swear his signature, but it's up to the notary, how he wants to handle that.
We have a new form anyway.
Oh, you have a new one? All right. And just, now that he's signed it, you have to just squeeze this in over, oh, you're going to sign here?
They tend to put it just kind of anywhere.
Right. There's not, there's not a space for it. I'll just walk. Don't look for one. We have to correct, think about that, change the form, maybe put a spot there. A man that should do a job really well. Sorry, sir, you had a stay for such a long hearing, but, you know, it is, was more than most of our hearings. All right, so the affidavit of service has been, affidavit of posting has been resubmitted, and it is now in order? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so the affidavit of posting has been re-sworn today, and it's now in order, so that means you can go forward with the matter. From before, sir, you've heard the analysis and review and recommendations and proposed resolutions set forth by the Planning Department. Are you in agreement with all that?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from any member of the board? Anybody present who wishes to be heard on this? No? And then, S.K., please, a motion to close the public hearing?
In the matter of number 899B, map of Jason Estates, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Hearing is closed. Then a motion on the resolution on this matter?
In the matter of number 899B, map of Jason Estates, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Resolution is adopted. Thank you, sir. Sorry you had to wait so long.
No, that's all right.
But it's the alternative to coming back and doing it over again, so it's all done now.
No, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And don't call up your friends for a ride.
All right, and on the other matters, there's nothing, so that means we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? We're adjourned.